Okay, so we'll just go ahead and call the meeting to order.
Recording in progress.
Okay, so we will continue to have these meetings according to, according and will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N 2920. Some or all members of the City Council will be participating in the meeting remotely via teleconferencing or other electronic means consistent with Executive Order N 2920, which suspended certain requirements of the Brown Act. Please refer to the end of the agenda for instructions related to public comment and attending the meeting. Irene, would you like to go ahead and read the address in the City Council public comment, please?
Let's see, make sure my... Yes, thank you, Mayor. So hello, everyone. Just like to state for the record that this meeting is being recorded and conducted by telecommunications pursuant to the Brown Act waivers provided for under the Governor's Executive Order in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Members of the council, please remember that in order to prevent cross-talk or feedback, please mute your microphones until it is your turn to speak or called upon. For the public comment, members of the public wishing to make a comment, please click on the raised hand icon on your mobile device, or if you're calling in, press dial star nine. Once called upon by the mayor or city clerk, you will then be unmuted for public comments. Please limit your comments to three minutes. Once the public comment is closed by the mayor, no additional comments will be taken unless the mayor chooses to reopen the public comment period. Thank you.
Thank you. And may I ask Councilmember Paula to direct the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic, which stands one nation, under God,
in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, just a second. And roll call, please.
Yes, Councilmember Bagby.
Present.
Councilmember Paula.
Here.
Councilmember Walter.
Here.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lamb.
Present.
And Mayor Cruz.
Here.
Thank you. Thank you, Irene. Now, I would like to know if there's a conflict of interest declaration by any of us? We're not. We'll continue. And are there any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Madam Mayor, staff has no proposed changes or additions to the agenda this evening.
Thank you. All right. So now we'll go ahead and open for public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each speaker will have three minutes. Are there any hands?
I'm checking for hands raised, Mayor, and I do not see any hands raised at this time.
Okay, thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on to consent calendar. All items on the consent counter will be considered together by one action of the council unless any council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. May I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I'll move that we approve this consent calendar as submitted.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Irene?
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Aye.
And Mayor Cruz.
Aye. Thank you.
And now we will go to... See, any communications that we need to consider at this moment?
Yeah, I just wanted to bring up the pending legislation. Actually, City Manager, did you want to go ahead and cover that quickly?
Councilmember Bagby, I was gonna bring that up under legislative reports. Will we get to that point on the agenda?
Oh, perfect. Great, thank you.
And if I could ask Irene, if you want, I know we received some additional correspondence after the agenda was posted. If you could just briefly summarize the correspondence that was received by subject matter?
Yes, of course. So we received communication from Ms. Besser regarding new stoplights on South Cloverdale Boulevard, C.J. Kennedy regarding safe and sane fireworks, a communication from Councilmember Bagby regarding the opportunity for local government training and partnership on equitable home electrification, and then, of course, the one that was mentioned regarding immediate action on broadband funding for local government, Cities for Workforce Health webinar, creating a psychology healthy workplace, and the 2022 State Highway Operations and Protection Program priorities from Sonoma County.
And if I may ask, City Manager, do you plan on addressing that League of City webinar in your COVID report?
Happy to do that, Councilmember Bagby.
Great, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Bagby. All right. No business. Go ahead, David, please.
Mayor, I will actually handle item three. So Mayor, Councilmembers, Alex Maug from the City Attorney's Office. And just moments ago, as item two on the consent counter, you approved a one-year extension of existing MOUs with the city's various labor bargaining groups. I mean, as part of that extension, approved certain one-time payments to those city employees. And as is the standard practice and the city's standard practice, as part of that process, the City Council also considered, you know, compensation for its nonrepresented senior management positions. So this item would provide a one-time payment of $1,000, which is the same amount that was provided to other city employees, non-safety city employees, to executive staff of the city. So that would include the city manager, the assistant city manager slash community development director, the finance director, the city clerk, and the chief of police. And this is a one-time payment. It is not a change to anyone's otherwise compensation levels. So with that, happy to take any questions if the council has any.
Does any council member have any comments on this particular item? Okay, so the request is... The recommended action is to, by motion, adopt a resolution entitled, "A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Cloverdale Approving a One-Time Payment of $1,000 for Unaffiliated Employees."
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move the resolution by title.
I'll second that, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Councilmember Paula.
Aye.
Councilmember Walter.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Lamb.
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby. And Mayor Cruz.
Aye, thank you.
Very well. And now we're considering support. Item number four, consider supporting the statement by the Sonoma County mayors condemning the violent act committed at the home of Rona Park council member Willie Linares. So, City Manager, could you please address this?
Absolutely, Madam Mayor. Mayor and members of council included in your packet is a media release that includes a statement that was made from the Sonoma County mayors. All the mayors from representing Sonoma County City signed on to a statement condemning an act that was committed at the home of Rona Park council member Willie Linares. This was an act that was committed on the Fourth of July that involved a fire in council member Linares's garbage can that was apparently started by fireworks and appeared to be precipitated based on his position relative to a legislative matter before the council of Rona Park. In response, the Sonoma County mayors conferred and issued a joint statement. The action that's being requested tonight is for council to support the action and statement that was made by the mayors of Sonoma County. Happy to offer any additional information in support of councils making a statement that they support this action this evening. Madam Mayor, that concludes staff's report. If there's anything else you'd like me to add, I'm happy to do so.
Yeah, that's just fine. We'll just need to consider our position regarding this kind of acts based on our voting record.
Madam Mayor, I have one quick question for you, if you don't mind. I'm just wondering if you have any updates since this date? I've been trying to find any articles or anything that anyone might know since this happened to get more facts on it. His pictures were wonderful on his Instagram account that's posted in the Press Democrat, and it was very telling. I'm just wondering if there's more that you know yet?
No, that is still under investigation, and as soon as there's some results, I'm sure that they will be shared with all of us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I would, I'll just, you know, make a comment. I think it's, I'm very happy that the mayors got together immediately and released a statement on this. I think it's important for us to stand by our elected, our fellow electeds and let them know that, you know, that this isn't protest, this is harassment, and that we stand with them and that, you know, we're about the rule of law and the protection of our democratic freedoms. And this was just, you know, this was just blatant harassment from somebody who didn't agree with Willie on his votes. And so I certainly hope that the perpetrators are apprehended and charged. This is a very serious, you know, it's an attack on an elected official with his young family in his home. You know, it wasn't just a couple of firecrackers, it was packages of illegal fireworks that were designed to make a point and to, you know, scare people. And this is a time where we need people to, we need young people like Willie throughout Sonoma County and throughout our country to step up and pick up the torch that, you know, that an earlier generation is, you know, starting, we're seeing, they're starting to retire from public life. And so I'm very happy to see that the mayors took this very seriously, got together and put together some thoughtful comments and, you know, let folks know that they have support, that their family has support, and that, you know, this kind of behavior, this anti-democratic behavior just can't be tolerated and won't be tolerated. Because we need more people like Willie Linares, who are hardworking, young folks, who, I don't know how he does it with his job, but we need people like him to be stepping up and stepping into public office. So thanks so much for getting the mayors together and taking leadership role in this and putting together the statement. I definitely support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Councilmember Paula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like Councilmember Bagby said, you know, we can agree to disagree, but we need to be respectful and we need to be, we need to do it peacefully. And that, there was, there's no way to justify an act of violence and intimidation against anybody, including an elected official who's doing the best they can with the information they have. So I also wholeheartedly want to thank you and all the mayors for stepping up, putting this out and condemning this type of behavior, and I'm happy to support this as well.
Madam Mayor, I would just like to ditto the comments of Councilmember Bagby and Paula, and of course yourself, through the action of supporting this letter. It's a despicable thing that, as Councilmember Bagby said, we have young folks getting into the arena of the local political aspects and they're intimidated or they're threatened. It just shouldn't be that way. So I full-heartedly support this action as well, and thank you for taking the lead on this.
Thank you. Council, Vice Mayor Lamb?
No, I won't repeat what everyone else has said. Like I said, those pictures were very telling. And so you don't always have to wait to get the facts when they're very, very apparent. Not like somebody went by and put their trash into his. It was definitely a direct attack on him, and we all need to stand together. And any type of trying to silence or intimidate him is wrong. I hope they catch and convict the people that are involved in this.
Thank you. I thank all of you, as well as I continue to thank the mayors of Sonoma County. We are a democratic society. That is why we have, that is why we have the vote, the voting opportunity, and we have the polls. You don't like us, vote against us. But please, do not attack individuals, because everybody deserves an opportunity to have their own opinion and express themselves without necessarily harming anybody else. So thank you for the support. And at this moment, I would like to know if we can just go ahead and move on to the next items of our business meeting before we join the planning commission.
Madam Mayor, it's your pleasure if you want to ask the council for a formal vote of support. Otherwise, council by consensus has indicated their support for the statement. So it's really the council.
I think it's okay to just approve it on consent. And we'll also share this with the rest of council members in the county. Thank you very much. Now, in terms of subcommittee reports, Finance will be August 2nd. Money and Sustainability, Councilmember Bagby.
August 17th.
Public Works.
Madam Mayor, Public Works will be the 27th, but I believe the time is incorrect on our agenda. It should be 2:00 PM.
That is correct. Make sure the record shows the correction of that time.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may...
And also in Finance, right?
It's 1:30 in Finance.
1:30, yes.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And Joint City Fire District will be October 11th, unless there is a need for us to meet prior to that date. We hope not. Joint City School District?
City School District is next week, July 19th at 5:00. And the next one in line is mine as well, the Homeless Committee. We met yesterday. And the next meeting is August 10th. It's listed as 1:00, but I believe it's actually going to be 5:00.
That is correct. It's the alternating date, time.
Correct. So that'll be 5:00 to 6:30 on August 10th is the next homeless meeting.
Very well. Council reports, I submitted mine in writing. And so did Councilmember Bagby. Anybody else with any verbal reports? Councilmember Paula?
Madam Mayor, I submitted mine in writing as well.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I will just say one thing for a quick update on what we've been doing at the River with the vegetation management. Just really quick, we're just waiting for the SAT crews to give us the date to start. We had everybody in line and everything set up and ready to go. As soon as we have those dates, I will put them out to the public to try to get more volunteers, because I know we have a lot of people in our community that want to help.
Thank you very much. Okay. So David, please, put us up to date on some legislative issues here.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor. In terms of legislative reports, I wanted to bring to the attention a call for action that was released by the League of California Cities for AB 156 and SB 156, their companion bills in the Assembly and Senate. This is in support of broadband funding for local governments. AB 156, SB 156 would provide up to $2 billion, or $2 billion, excuse me, for last-mile broadband infrastructure benefiting rural and urban areas, additional funding for statewide open access in a middle-mile network, as well as some loan loss revenue to leverage additional investments at the local level. This bill is being heard, actually today, and it's anticipated to be taken up on the floor of the House tomorrow, Thursday, July 15th. The recommendation, if council supports, is for council members to call our representatives in both the Senate and House. In our case, it'd be Senator Mike McGuire and Assembly Member Jim Wood to voice your support. We wanted to bring this forward because we are being requested by the League of California Cities to call both our senator and our assemblyman in support of this legislation. Given the late timeframe for getting a letter, my recommendation would be to authorize individual council members to call our representatives and voice their support for this bill. There are particular, potential benefits to the city in the way of potential funding for broadband services. As we know, during the pandemic, there was some concern about lack of access to broadband services, and this bill is intended to provide funding to address that issue. Madam Mayor, that's the end of my report. It's really, if council agrees to support, you know, it's not specifically agendized, but just general support for council members calling our legislators and voicing their support for this companion bill in the Assembly and Senate.
It's definitely a very important issue, and it would be wise, perhaps, to go ahead and call our representatives. If you'll be so kind to send the updated phone call, phone numbers, and emails so that we can move on this.
Absolutely, Mayor. We'll, either City Clerk Irene Muchawerby or myself will forward the contact information to council.
With appropriate wording also to make sure that we are addressing the appropriate legislative move.
Absolutely.
Maybe Irene can point out where it is in the packet, because it was forwarded in its entirety. It has the phone numbers as well as talking points. And I'm...
I copied it and put it on my list to do.
Right.
So, but just in case, just a good reminder for us, so we don't have to search too much. Okay, and anything on our water situation? Our meeting is coming up. I know that the technical meeting with the Russian River Water Association took place, and there are some concerns. Anything you would like to share, David?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, key update, we heard from representatives at the State Board today that they're very likely to implement requirements for senior water right holders, which would affect the City of Cloverdale, which is a senior water right holder on the upper Russian River watershed, or within the upper Russian River watershed. More than likely, what that will necessitate is the triggering of health and safety standards to ensure we are able to continue to deliver water to our residential customers. At this point, we don't have any specific details on what the health and safety standards may ultimately be. So that's more information to come. They're just providing notice that the next target is senior water right holders like the City of Cloverdale. So more information to come on this, and it will be particularly impactful to our utility customers as well as the city. So it's a very significant action that's being taken by the State Water Resource Control Board to address the impact of the drought. Staff has convened a, what we refer to as a Water Emergency Response Team. We're actually meeting bi-weekly to discuss actions to address the drought conditions, and this will be one of those matters that we discuss. Likewise, we'll also be bringing forward an ordinance to consider amendments to our municipal code, to align the municipal code with the recently adopted Urban Water Management Plan. And as part of that, we'll be asking council to look at whether to implement additional restrictions in terms of water use. But that may be precluded because of the state requirements on health and safety standards. So more to come on this in the near future. We're still evaluating the State Board's statements that were made today.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from council to...
Through the chair, if I may. David, I was wondering if you could... I realize that you just said that you got new information today, but what is the timeline for adopting the revised Urban Water Management Plan and as more than likely moving to a new drought level? What timeline are you, even if you had to guess right now, what would that be?
Yeah, I think the timeline for bringing it forward to council will be in August. I will be conferring with our city attorney team. In fact, Alex has provided today a draft ordinance for review. We will likely bring that forward to the Finance, Admin, and Police Subcommittee on August 7th, or excuse me, August 2nd, and then bring it forward to council as soon as possible thereafter in the determination whether it requires a public hearing and, you know, putting the public hearing notice in the newspaper for council information.
Thank you.
Any other council member? Has any questions? This is just an item that is hot on the stove, and it has a lot of discussion to. It requires a lot of discussion. Okay, so at this moment, any future agenda items that you would like to suggest? If not, you could email those to David?
Madam Mayor, if I can, just real quickly, back up to the status update on the current emergency. Okay with you?
Yes, yes.
Wanted to alert council to a webinar that is going to be offered by the League of California Cities through a league partner. The webinar is scheduled for Tuesday, August 3rd, from 1:00 to 2:00 PM. The presenters are Andara Notch from the Workforce Health Consultant with Kaiser Permanente, as well as Christina Torizo with Mental Health and EAP Consultant, as well as Kaiser Permanente. The webinar is to talk about the critical role of a psychologically healthy workforce. And this webinar is in response to the impact that COVID has had on our collective mental health of our staff and team. And this is to provide an overview of some of the best practices around psychological and mental health. And just wanted to point that out, because it's in direct relationship to the impacts that we've experienced from COVID.
And may I ask, David, if you have any new numbers on COVID cases in Cloverdale?
Madam Mayor, I don't have those handy. We can certainly see if we can query the Sonoma County's website that maintains the current COVID case data and pull out the data for the 95425 ZIP code. And at that level, it won't necessarily be specific to the city, but it would give us numbers for our... us numbers for for our our ZIP code.
I was asking because I think in one of our meetings, somebody mentioned something to Chief Ferguson, and, no, okay. All right, well, thank you. And at this moment, I think we need to adjourn this meeting.
Madam Mayor, sorry to interrupt you, Madam Mayor, but just on for future agenda items, I'd like to ask on the Public Works Subcommittee agenda that the new traffic signal light at the south end of Cloverdale be placed on there, and I'd also like to ask the city manager to see if he could get the representative who programmed those lights to attend that meeting. There's a lot of complaints in the community over that, and I personally experienced some of the frustrations with the way those lights are functioning, so it'd be good to have a conversation.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thank you very much. So I'll call the meeting as adjourned.